Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shockey.
Here.
Andy Salhards.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Terry Billbirde.
She's absent, excused.
Kevin Tansky.
Would you please sit and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Follow the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing. For our prayer this evening will be offered by Father Nahim Cahill of St. Elias.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Blessed is the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Christ is risen from the dead, and by his death he has trampled upon death, and has given life to those who are in the tombs. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Yes, Almighty God, today we are meeting to serve people, to serve you through people. We celebrated your resurrection. We ask you to keep you living in our hearts, in our homes, in our city, in our country, because what we do here, we don't do it with our strength, we do it because we love you. Help us to show your will with everyone we deal every day. Thank you, God, because you gave us the opportunity before we start the meeting of our board, of our council, to really understand how it's important to let you work in our lives, in our work. Then you will be living in us as we should live in you. We ask this in your name, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes dated February 26th, 2018. Any comments or questions regarding those minutes? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve.
To approve.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey.
Yes.
Andy Salhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
All right, just at the beginning, I just want to let everyone know that the conclusion of our council meeting this evening, there will be a brief public works commission meeting, and the only thing on the agenda was to elect a chairperson and set the meetings for the dates and times that will take place immediately following our council meeting this evening. At this time, we will proceed with our council meeting. If anyone has anything in the audience they'd like to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comment list five minutes or fewer. No one? Okay. We will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Recreation Board Council, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, April 16th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Kolsar.
Thank you. The next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be Thursday, April 19th, here at Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room at 6:00 PM. Request from Seconia for two sign variants to the number of identification signs permitted on a building face. This is for the Mark Store located at 7359 North Cliff Avenue. Request from American Fence Company for barbed wire fence, which is not permitted in a commercial district, for Allstate Peterbilt at 9500 Brook Park Road. A request from LaBella Associates for four-foot variance to the maximum width of an access drive, also for Allstate Peterbilt at 9500 Brook Park Road. And last request, which is again from LaBella Associates, this is for a two-foot variance for an eight-foot tall fence in a commercial district for Allstate Peterbilt at 9500 Brook Park Road. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kolsar. The Plating Commission did meet this last Thursday, April 5th, at 6:00 PM, and we heard the following. A request from Michael Martin for a building addition sign package and parking lot alteration for the McDonald's at 4738 Ridge Road, and this was approved. A request from SureSite for additional three antennas on an existing cell tower for 10904 Brook Park Road, and this item was deferred. A request from Brilliant Sign Company for a wall-mounted LED channel letter sign for Nail Supply Store at 6606 Bid Off Road, and this was approved. A request from Secagna Electric and Sign Company for two additional identification signs on the storefront for Marks at 7359 North Cliff, and this was approved contingent on the zoning's approval of the variants. And then lastly was a request from Jessica Cliff for two wall signs, one mounted LED channel letter sign and one business identification at 4315 Ridge Road, and this was deferred to the next meeting, which will be Thursday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM. We'll now move on with our School Board Liaison, Councilman Politzky.
I apologize.
All right, then move on with Sustainability, Councilman Tansky.
Sustainability Advisory Committee was held on Wednesday, March 28th, at 4:30 PM. Topic discussed was ordinance 2018-17 that was deferred by council. There were three major questions that were asked by the committee, and here's the update to those questions. Commission was concerned that the administration hadn't sought competitive proposals for the balance of the site. It was concerned the rent Interlogics is offering is less than fair market value because it's not being prepaid. Update. The rent per megawatt is the same as the rent per megawatt under the earlier lease, and was vetted in 2017 as a fair market value based on the other Ohio solar sites and east coast landfill solar projects. However, Interlogics has agreed to match the rent paid by IGS for the southern half of a site in all respects, including full prepayment, so the net present value calculation is the same. Commission wanted to know what else could be built on the landfill site. Someone had mentioned a towing yard as an option. Update. C.C., our environmental consultants, have answered that question by identifying the use as not only the one approved by the Ohio EPA, but the best example of reuse of the landfill site. Ohio EPA has confirmed. Commission wanted to know whether CPP's offloading of solar power from a landfill site could translate into lower rates for our municipal facilities lining Memphis. In other words, could the mere presence of the solar site translate into cheaper electricity for the city government? Update. Having reviewed internally with various advisors, we have confirmed our CPP rates approved at the last council meeting are more competitive than the rates for power that would be generated on the solar site. Cogga County's rates for solar power being under the earlier lease, for example, are less competitive than our rates with CPP. The committee is still waiting on Law Director Kevin Butler on further negotiations with Interlogics on possible increasing more rent for the land to the city. As I read, we did gain in talks with Interlogics on receiving the entire rent for the 20-year lease upfront, like we did with IGS in the first contract. Sustainability Committee unanimously recommended 2018 ordinance, sorry, 2018-17 ordinance recommended to council for approval. Upon further negotiations with Interlogics, I'm asking for this ordinance to be held in abeyance until Law Director Mr. Butler has completed his discussions with Interlogics, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. The items that we discussed and financed this evening, I'll go over the new items and the items up for a third reading and adoption. The first of which is 2018-33, an agreement for the sale and purchase of the land bank property on Shitty Lane, and the Economic Development Committee recommended the city purchase this last year, and currently this land is in the city land bank and is not currently being used, and the committee did recommend council adopt. Next is 2018-34. This is supposed to be up for a third reading this evening. This is authorizing into a job retention creation grant with Hope Bridge LLC, and that current lease fell through with the current landlords that they were looking at. They do still plan on coming to Brooklyn, but they need to find a new location, so we will be voting to put this into abeyance this evening. Next is 2018-37, and to ratify the city of Brooklyn's updated statement of investment policy, but we had some representatives from Key Bank that were with us this evening, and that discussed the different proposal to the city, and it is going to be a very nice deal the city is going to be able to obtain from that. That's on second reading, we did have them as guests this evening, and so we'll discuss more about that when it's up for third reading and adoption. Next is ordinance 2018-38, amending sections 18203 and 18205, and enacting section 18205 I of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn to come into conformance with the state municipal income tax legislation. We've talked about this before, and the administration is hoping that we pass this by emergency this evening. There was an appeals, there is an appeals process going on about having the state take over the municipal tax, income tax collection, and it is on appeal right now, however, there was a stay there to stop the law from going to affect that stay, did not take effect. The law is in effect right now, and so this ordinance would bring Brooklyn into compliance with the new Ohio revised code. If the appeal process does go through and it does come favorably on the city, of course we repeal this ordinance and we go back to the way it was before, but as of right now, until that appeals process is done, it is the law of Ohio, and so we need to be into compliance, and so we do hope to pass this by emergency, and Mr. Butler has promised to keep us apprised of that lawsuit. It could be months, if not longer, but until all the appeals process gets done, all the hearings and arguments and everything are finished, so we'll keep you apprised on that. But as of tonight, we do hope to pass that to be in conformance with the Ohio law. Under new legislation this evening is ordinance 2018-40, and this is to amend section 1 of ordinance 2016-6, establishing fees for the sports sponsorship program. Currently, the rates are from $200 to $500 per program. This would change the rates from $200 to $500, $200 to $1,000 per program or event. And then sister ordinance to that is ordinance 2018-41, amending section 1 of ordinance 2016-23, establishing fees for advertising at the Rec Center. Currently, there are four different things that we can advertise at, this would add two more, but one would be for the Center ICE advertising, that price would range between $4,000 and $10,000, and the second one will be for dashboard advertisements for the price between $600 and $1,500. All the other advertising prices would remain the same. Then lastly is ordinance 2018-42, and this is to authorize the updated capital improvement plan for 2018. This has to do with the ridge slope repair located on Ridge Road next to Best Buy, and we've known this is coming for a while. We budgeted $42,248 for the engineering portion of this in the 2018 budget. We got the fee proposal from our engineer, Mr. Courtney, and it came out at $48,407. So we do need to pass this ordinance to update that amount. And lastly, we had a little bit of a lengthy discussion with the mayor regarding the Parma Regional Dispatch Center. Our contract for that is up at the end of July, and we are going to see if we stay with Parma, a significant increase in the price of that to the tune of $41,158 a month, or just a shade under $494,000 a year, which is a substantial increase to what we're currently paying right now. And so the mayor and the administration are looking at different options for that, and one such area is the Chagrin Valley Dispatch Center, and the yearly rate is almost identical to that would be for Parma for the yearly rate. There is a buy-in of $288,000 we would pay in over the course of five years, but that yearly rate would be about $491,000. And so the mayor has to give the city of Parma an answer by May to let them know what our intentions are for that, so those negotiations are still going on, but I wanted to give the public an update on that. And that concludes the finance report. We will now move on with reports of council, we'll begin this evening with Mrs. Politzky.
Thank you, President Van Kirk. Good evening. I hope everyone had a pleasant Easter week. Spring break is over and classes have resumed, so please drive carefully. I attended the Solar Array Anti-Groundbreaking Event on April 4th, 2018. Brooklyn is first again, the seatbelt law, the cellphone law, and now the first solar farm in Ohio to be constructed on a landfill and the first on public land. This event was attended by Cogga County officials, public and private energy providers, and agencies too numerous to mention. Each speaker made it clear that Brooklyn will be an example for Ohio and other states on innovative ways to use otherwise unusable land. Thank you to an idea from Mr. Tansky, who together with Mike Foley did research and presented findings to the city. Thanks to Mayor Gallagher and our Law Director, Mr. Butler, for the time they spent to bring this ordinance to council. Thanks to all the members of council who agreed that this was the best use of the land. When you vote on May 8th, keep in mind that Brooklyn is moving in a good direction, and that we can't continue to do so if our schools are in trouble. Please make sure you vote and consider how important this renewal levy is. It will not increase taxes, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Next up is Mrs. Ryan Shockey.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Director McGinty for taking me around the Rec Center. My first job was actually at North Elmstead Rec Center, the concession stand, so it was fun to tour the Brooklyn Rec and meet some of the staff, including Tina, Linda, and Chris. I enjoy talking and learning about the work they do and the challenges they face. I look forward to working together over the next two years for the best interests of the residents. Today was the last day to register to vote for the May primaries. Tomorrow starts early voting. It is so important to vote in this election, as Brooklyn has the school levy on the ballot, as Ms. Politzky explained. I strongly encourage residents to vote yes on the school levy. While it does not raise taxes, it is important for the children of this community and our city as a whole. Other issues on the May ballot include issue one regarding redistricting, as well as federal, state, and judicial primary candidates. Just another reminder that I will be hosting my first coffee chat on Wednesday, April 18th at 7:15. It will take place at Dunkin' Donuts in the Ridge Park Square. I encourage residents to stop by, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan Shockey. Next up is Mr. Salhards.
Thank you. A couple reminders, at the end of this month on Saturday, April 28th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at Copperstone Catering and Events Center, Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce will be hosting Brooklyn and all that jazz. It's an event to raise money for the scholarships. $15 pre-sale, $20 for tickets at the door. Speaking of scholarships, this Friday, April 13th, any applications for the scholarships must be postmarked by that day. There will be two scholarships, an amount of $2,000 each. First scholarship will be awarded to a graduating Brooklyn High School senior who currently resides in the city of Brooklyn, who will be attending a recognized college or university full-time in the fall. Second scholarship will be available to any Brooklyn High School senior, Brooklyn or Brooklyn resident, who will be attending a recognized college or university full-time in the fall. Congratulations to a couple of 7th and 8th graders. They were at, on March 17th, went out to Obelin, working on the Penn Ohio State Qualifying. 7th grader Brianna Slowinski, 8th graders Maria Lukenk and also Lila Schwinn. They are advancing to state competitions on May 24th at Rooster College. Also had a meeting prior to our meetings here over at Metro Health, considering, just giving a little bit of update, they've started construction on a 1,500 space parking garage where the old North Coast Behavioral Healthcare Building was. And June of 2018, they're going to be announcing the new hospital plan will be unveiled. On September 20th of 18, construction of a new parking garage will begin. In fall of 2018, demolition of South Point Parking Garage. Early 2019, construction of the new hospital begins. Early 2022, construction of the hospital, which should be complete, and in the summer of '22, first patient should be admitted. Reason I'm mentioning this is half of our squad runs either to the main campus of Parma, to Metro, or to the Parma campus now of Metro on Snow Road. Interesting is that out of their campus footprint on West 25th, they're actually going to make half of it into a park, what they're going to call an eco-district. The buildings are going to be lead-approved, so it's going to be more of an urban setting where they're going to try to promote residences around it. They're going to either try to rehab things, try to have their staff interns, residents move into buildings nearby. One of the things that the president of the hospital mentioned is that they found out that people in a general greener setting, their heartbeats just go down by 10 to 15 heartbeats. So they're just trying to, instead of healing people, they're trying to actually develop a new way of life around there. And with, a few years ago, they had a $900 million, let's say, budget for the hospital. Their economic input footprint for the community in Cogga County was actually $1.2 billion, so they're a major factor in their area. The economic development committees around that area also have kind of combined together and formed a new name, and they're calling themselves Metro West, so just a little bit of update on that area. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Salhards. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. As Ms. Ryan Shockey mentioned, today was the deadline to register to vote to have it be effective for the primary, and tomorrow ballots start to be mailed if you've requested a vote by mail. Even though they start being mailed tomorrow, there's still plenty of time, and I would urge people to consider using this very convenient method of voting. And the school issue is issue four. I'm sure most of you have seen, a lot of the signs are already out, there's going to be phone banking starting and a door-to-door campaign. This is very important to the schools and our community. Whether you have children in the schools or not, or whether you're concerned about the children in the schools or not, our property values are tied to a strong and stable school system. And this renewal is a zero increase, and it does represent almost 14% of the school's budget. Mr. Kolsar, when you give your report, would you mind just, can you give us a brief explanation why they're requesting a barbed wire fence over on Brook Park, if they've given us a reason? And safe routes to school, our next meeting is Wednesday, April 11th at 9:30 in room 173 in the school. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn Solar Panel Project Anti-Groundbreaking, held on Wednesday, April 4th, was well attended. I would like to thank Mayor Katie Gallagher, community leaders, and the residents who were present for this, present for this open-to-the-public event. Several public officials, including Cogga County Executive Armin Buddhish, Director of Sustainability for Cogga County Mike Foley, representatives from Interlogics, IGS, CPP, the mayor and myself gave short presentations on solar energy as a source of sustainable energy. Why that's important, approximate cost savings of $3 million over 25 years, and why it is good for our community. The event concluded with a ceremonial signing of a solar panel for all those who wish to sign. Solar farm is located at 9400 Memphis Avenue, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Everyone pretty much covered everything this evening. I just want, I got a real nice letter in the mail, and in this generation, handwritten letters are going out of style, but it's very nice to get one in the mail. And I'm not going to read the letter, it's almost a full page, but it's just from a resident who was very appreciative of council voting in favor of adding prayer to the beginning of our council meetings. And I've received probably five or six emails from the past council meeting just saying thank you for doing that, it was very much needed, and this person was just very pleased that we did this. He said I can read the letter, so it's okay to mention that, and I thought this was very interesting. He said, "Do not let political correctness keep you from doing the right thing." And I would encourage everyone to say that way. We live in a world today where everything, everyone's trying to be politically correct, and it's just very encouraging to get things like this, and so I want to thank Father Cahill for coming this evening, and the pastor from Dr. Martin Luther Church will be here at the next council meeting, so I just want to share that with the community. We'll now move on with the mayor's report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. First, I would like to thank the Westbrook Apartments for hosting me there last week so I could speak to some of the residents. I know Councilman Salhards came out to join the meeting, I think it was very productive, allows residents to really just have an open dialogue, ask questions about what's going on in the community, so I'm going to continue to try to hit different spots in the area, so please keep a lookout for that. I also want to thank the Brooklyn Historical Society for having me for their spring potluck. These people who volunteer there do such a great job of preserving Brooklyn's history, and if you haven't checked it out, it's a great center, they're open on Tuesdays. I ran into a longtime Brooklyn resident who said they just checked out the place for the first time ever, and they were just so impressed about how much information they were able to obtain about what he was looking for, so again, you know, I want to thank those volunteers there that keep Brooklyn's history alive. I'm also a representative for the Mayor's Managers Association on the Water Council of Governments, and I just sort of want to give an update. Cleveland Water Department has been making some investments to the work order system. They went live with that a couple months ago, and they're going to use 2018 as the year to work out some of the kinks with that system, but their hope is that next year they're going to be able to roll this kind of live monitoring out to our fire departments when they're flushing hydrants, and to residents if they have, if they see any kind of dirty water, they're able to tell the cities who actually get the phone calls what work has been done there live. So I'm excited about that possibility coming up, and also, they wanted me to pass on to the residents, thank you for your patience. Apparently, this past January was the most water main breaks they had ever had in the history of the water department with the cold temperatures and the rain, so they were working overtime, constantly trying to fix it throughout the entire county. I know our service director, John Verbo, was trying to keep track, and we had awful lot in the city of Brooklyn as well, so I wanted to pass on that information. And last but not least, Benkei Landscape Architects is ready for three conceptual plans for the Hurricane Alley Joint Project with the school. I've reached out to the people who are representing council for some dates to meet on that subcommittee, and I'm excited to see what these three conceptual plans look like, and the public is welcome to join us and give some input. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with the records report. We begin this evening with our rec manager, Mrs. McGinty.
Good evening. Brooklyn Youth Baseball Registration has been extended to April 30th. Resident fees are $50 for students ages 4 to 14. Three-year-old T-ball fees are $50. For more information, you can call the program coordinator, Jennifer O'Banion, at 216-635-4274, or you can email her at jobanion@brooklynohio.gov. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our finance director, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Good evening. Please let me know if you will not be able to attend the first of the 2019 City Council Budget Work Session, and that is scheduled for the third Monday in May, the 21st of May. I'll be teeing up a couple pieces of legislation at that council budget work session at the council meeting 5/28. I hope to be able to introduce the change number one to the 2018 appropriations, permanent appropriations. I'm also planning to introduce the 2019 tax budget, and that will be hopefully three readings prior to council's normally scheduled summer recess, and the main purpose of the tax budget requirement is to ensure that the municipalities plan for and appropriate enough funding to cover next year's obligations for debt service, and this will look very similar to the tax budget that was introduced last year. At that point in May, the city will also have received the five months' worth of 2018 income tax collections from RITA, so I'll have a better idea where the city stands with the largest source of revenue. The city receives the April reconciliation distribution from RITA this Friday, the 13th, so I'll be sure to update, and for the first four months of municipal income tax collections, the city councils and directors, when it's available. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And Mr. Kolsar, would you be willing to answer that question for Mrs. Pucci?
Yes. I'm afraid I don't have a very good answer to that, Mrs. Pucci. I don't recall what they put on their application. That was submitted by the fence contractor, but I'd say is that they did have an existing six-foot fence with barbed wire, that's what they currently have, and I'm sure it's, you know, some kind of security reasons that they feel. reasons that they feel they need it, along with the eight-foot fence in front and gate.
So they had one that was grandfathered in, or that they received a variance for?
The existing fence was six-foot with barbed wire. I couldn't tell you how many years ago that was there. Looks like it's been a long time. When it was Carnegie Body, this is old Carnegie Body property.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kolsar. We'll now move on with the legislation for this evening. The first thing we have is a liquor permit transfer request from McGees Pub and Grill, and the administration and the chief have no objections.
Move for a position of no objection.
Second.
For no objection. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Stand.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Do we have a rule on abstentions?
Just about.
Okay. Sorry. I thought it would come before. Thank you.
According to our rules of council, if any time a council member abstains from a piece of legislation or give an explanation, I'd be happy to do so. I've done it in the past. My faith dictates that we do not consume or have anything to do with alcohol, and so that is why I abstain from anything that has to do with alcohol-related items on the agenda. We'll now move on with the business of council. Under old business this evening is ordinance 2018-17, which is still held in abeyance. This is dealing with the solar powered electric generation facility that Mr. Tansky mentioned in his report. Ordinance 2018-33 is up for a third reading and adoption. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the sale and purchase of vacant City of Brooklyn land bank property on Shitty Lane, parcel number 43311099, for $100 in other good and valuable consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. To adopt. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2018-34. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant agreement, excuse me, with Hope Bridge LLC. As I mentioned in the financial report, we do need to hold this in abeyance this evening until the company finds a new location, so I'll make the motion we hold in abeyance.
Second.
To hold in abeyance. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-37 is on second reading. This is to ratify the City of Brooklyn's updated statement of investment policy. Ordinance 2018-38 is on second reading, but we do hope to pass by emergency for the reasons I mentioned in my financial report, amending Sections 18203 and 18205, and enacting Section 18205-1 of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to bring the code into conformance with recently updated state municipal income tax legislation.
Introduce, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
To adopt. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
On second reading this evening is ordinance 2018-39, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-88, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time administrative employees of the non-bargaining agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Under new business this evening is Resolution 2018-3, recognizing the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And this piece of legislation was introduced by Ms. Meg Ryan Shaki, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything about that before we pass that resolution.
Um, no, not exactly. Just, it's been, April 11th is the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, and being on the Fair Housing Board, I thought it was important to recognize it and, you know, kind of keep it in our thoughts over the year as to what we can do to make sure that we're welcoming to all residents who live in Brooklyn and would like to live in Brooklyn.
And just to read the first line so the residents know what it says, it's a very lengthy resolution, but it says, "Whereas April 11th, 2018, marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family, familial status, disability, and national origin, it encourages fair housing and opportunities for all." So I appreciate Ms. Meg Ryan Shaki bringing us to the attention of this being the 50th anniversary. So I'll introduce both.
Introduce, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Bart Politsky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
And the final three pieces of legislation on first reading. Ordinance 2018-40, amending Section 1 of ordinance 2016-6, establishing fees for the